We'll go ahead and bring the City Council meeting in order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand or recite on their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, can you please do roll?
Craig Koshaw?
Here.
Matt Dyer?
Here.
Tyler Polonkian?
Here.
Scott Murray?
Here.
Wiley Surt?
Here. Will we all get a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting on April 19?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept him as emailed.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold, same side. Okay. Um, Jamie, we have a, or Phil has the information, there's a Plaza rental on May 28?
Yes, I have that. So, we have a rental on May 28th for Sasha Harrison, and she's turned in the application for Madison Street Plaza, it's your graduation party from 1 to 8, and the setup would be from 10:30 to 8:30, and they'll need bathrooms, electricity, and a sound system, and they have provided for liability insurance.
So, private parties, they pay?
Yep.
And how do they go about getting the liability?
They contact insurance company.
On the application, they have three different insurance carriers to choose from. So, you can do it one day.
Okay.
That's pretty simple.
Motion to approve the application for the plaza.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
Okay.
Um, do you have the June 11th time?
Yes, yes.
I see Jeff and Steph. Bobby's back there? Yep.
I'm Bob Krab, I'm Adams County Hairs and Connor Bright's Wildflowers, with me is Steph and Jeff Bright, and I'm gonna have them share what the Wildflowers program is.
Um, so, it's a, it's gonna be a music program where we can offer potentially free guitar, bass, keyboards, drum lessons to, uh, we haven't decided on the age yet, but we're gonna get a certain age group and had an introductory lesson to get them started, and potentially, if we had enough money, we do scholarships past that, um, fully offering instruments and, uh, I say lessons. I don't know if you have anything to add?
First time public speaking. And so, um, the program is not just for the kids, it's for all Adams County, and we have already like, uh, instructors willing to donate their time to provide these, uh, lessons for these youths, and we're looking at possibly, uh, middle school to high school, and then see if we're gonna see any success of that, to possibly expand it more. And so, it's gonna be a great program, it's in, you know, honor O'Connor, whose love for music was immense, and this is our way of keeping his spirit and legacy alive. And so, as you can tell on the banner, we are wanting to do a concert on June 11th, it'll be our first fundraiser, and we're hoping to have this as a annual event, because we're looking at obtaining, um, a room, and that costs money, and we would like to also provide the instructors some compensation, because it's, it's difficult to donate your time, you have a full-time job, and you also are providing lessons, so we just wanted to be, um, some people are down. And so, we have three bands lined up, we have Chris Hambrick, he's acoustic solo, we have the School of Rock in Fort Wayne, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the School of Rock, they'll be coming down, and then we have, um, I was gonna say the Eagles, not Bull Dogs. Bull Dogs, thank you, the Bull Dogs, and they will be, uh, we have five guys pouring who will provide, um, entertainment, and, um, we plan on doing a 50/50, and I am putting an application into the Indiana Gaming Board, and so hopefully we'll hear back from them. Um, on the application, I am wanting to, this is gonna be, I mean, this is gonna be a lot of people, I'm definitely four and plus, and I'm looking at safety, we have four food trucks who are gonna be on First Street. Um, I am concerned about passing vehicles on Second Street. I would like to see in that during the concert time, Second Street closed, but I know there's some businesses down there, I'm just looking at the safety.
What, what day of the week is it?
Saturday.
One thing that's worked well, that we found out with some of these events, is there's cops on duty, and we kinda leave it up to the cops, if they see that there's enough traffic that we should shut the street down, then they kinda make that call, and if not, then we kinda leave it open.
Okay.
And it's worked.
Yeah, that worked as well.
In previous concerts, but you kinda, we want safety too, but we also want people drive by, hey, what's going on? Let's pull, pull over and check it out, so.
Yeah, and so, with First Street, would that be able to be closed? I mean, I don't know where the food trucks are located.
That's what we've been doing, and that does take the pressure off of Second Street, food trucks over there along First Street, and then during the event, closing First Street down.
Well, do you have an application yet, or?
Yeah, they started an application.
Okay, okay.
On the application, if you just, if we shut down First Street, we'll just do it, uh, on the south side of Star Building, okay, so that, at least they can come in on First Street and park behind, on the First, First Street parking lot, and they can get out from the north side of the Marx Building.
It's not close to that Monroe.
And then we'll shut it down, we normally shut it down right at the beginning of the plaza to where it keeps the foot traffic cool, but then they can also go through the parking lot or park from both ends, is that, is that okay?
That's, that's great.
Yeah, they put on enough events now that they're figuring out the best practices and how to do that.
And so, we do have Bickler Insurance who will be providing insurance, they donated all their, uh, time and money to, uh, Wildflowers, so they are covering the event at no cost. Do you have any questions? What time did you say it was? I'm sorry, what time was it? Um, we have it from 5 to 11. Uh, our sound man is probably gonna be there around 2:30, they are bringing their own sound equipment, um, and so, there'll be kind of no use for city equipment. Our goal is to obtain a room at the Mayor's Center for this program, and we have, uh, residents have donated four pianos, guitars, bass, drums, and so, we have a lot of support so far from the community, and hopefully at that concert, we'll have much more.
I think it's great, I think you're gonna touch a lot of kids, I think it's awesome, you know, there's a lot of kids don't have the chance to do this, so I think it's really cool, I'm glad you guys are doing this. Um, one last thing, fire, I'm trying to put it in my phone, what's the time?
5 to 11 PM.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. Let, let us know if you have any other questions, if we need some help.
You work out the details with, don't you have a cousin that's the chief of police or something? I don't know.
I can't remember his name right now.
Huh? Yeah. He probably, he probably work it out.
I'm just there now. There you go. You provoked me here.
But that's paperwork, y'all.
Thanks for guys.
Yep, same thing.
Since this is the community bank, you're waiting on the fees, aren't you?
Yeah. Do I, we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah.
In that motion, I'd like to weigh the fees for the restroom and the electricity and anything else.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. Okay. All right. One nice event we have coming up for sure.
Pretty little.
Okay, I guess we'll do the public hearing now for the additional appropriation for redevelopment commission. So.
Make a motion to close, what do you think?
Suspend the council meeting.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. Okay.
Craig, can you take that, make your motion for the meeting?
His name's Wiley.
The additional appropriations for the redevelopment commission for the capital outlays for $225,000 for improvements other than buildings, um, is there anyone in attendance have any comments about the additional appropriation? And we can close.
And that's for the?
This is for the 13th Street Improvement Project.
So, this is for the project that's around the 13th and Bowman area, that we're trying to make it more pedestrian friendly and safer for the people crossing 27, they're just moving money around from different accounts so that they can use it to do this. Anyone else here?
Um, we just need to close the public hearing, and then we would also need to make a matter of record once we're back in council of that we have noticed the advertisement.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
Make a motion to reopen the city council meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. Okay.
Make a motion to make record of the publication newspaper.
Public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. So, now we have the resolution for this additional appropriation.
I got a bunch of stuff that I have to enter completely.
This, Resolution 10?
Um, actually, last meeting, I gave you the wrong resolution, but I told last to fix this, because it should be number eight.
Number eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will make a motion, I'll make a motion then to, um, introduce Resolution 2022-8 by short title only.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
Resolution 2022-8, additional appropriation for the redevelopment commission fund.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2022-8.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. Okay. All right, next we have, um, I think several businesses compliance with statement of benefits, CF1 forms. I think, were they all emailed to everyone? And.
Um, did you guys have any comments on that?
The way I saw it, the only one that was a little bit short on the number of employees was the, um, trucking.
PB trucking?
PB trucking, but it was within a number that I think still falls within, there's a little wiggle room there, I don't, what's the terminology they use?
I think they're at their last year also.
Yeah.
Substantial compliance is the way that it's worded, and they're, it's very close to what they originally said they would try to hire, and they're citing, we're constantly hiring, we've been hiring, we've all heard the trucking industry's having issues with But the others were well and above, um, number of employ, employees they stated, and the, the salaries that they stated, so it's great for the caterers, their business is booming.
Actually, it was Gilpin's.
Yeah, Gilpin's was though?
And he put in the same thing that he.
My apologies, I thought it was PMB.
Same, it was the same reason.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So, we're gonna do it one at a time?
Yeah, these, okay, you want me to do, the first one is for Rev, and they have an abatement, they have actually three of them.
And they well exceeded their numbers.
Yeah, they have three abatement, um, well, one's for the real estate, and two for personal.
Property.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement.
I'll second.
Motion second on Rev's abatement, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
And the other one's for, um, Gilpin's and J.K. Morris Holdings, I think, company.
I'll make a motion to approve theirs as well.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
They had what, two in there? Gilpin, or was it just?
Yeah, it's under, one's under Gilpin's and the other one's under the new name of J.K. Morris.
Right, okay, so they had two of them that were approved?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And then now enterprise, this is their last year for their abatement.
That's the PB trucking.
I'll make a motion to approve that abatement.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
PB trucking or now enterprises.
KNAUS.
No.
KNOUS.
Okay. KNOUS, okay.
The Manhoosher pattern has five abatement.
It's nice to see that they exceeded and then some, what, what they had asked of the city, I'd make a motion to accept their five as well.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
Will you be around tomorrow to sign all this?
Yeah, I believe so. Yep.
Is that it? Okay.
Okay, um, I believe the UTV ordinance is up for its third reading. Wendy?
Um, I talked to Ann last couple days, even over the weekend, so I'll kinda let her get the update on it.
Okay. So, after our first two readings, um, she probably had the opportunity to present the, the form of ordinance, um, back to Jacob, and I apologized to him, I, I, like, Bruch, Bruchling?
Bruchling.
Bruchling?
Yeah.
Okay, um, with the DNR, he's a conservation officer, and he was the gentleman who came up and met with us initially going through everything, and he did point out just a couple of very small changes, it has to do with the turn signals, those were going to be required equipment, but he reinforced the, the notion that, um, any kind of equipment that is pertained in the ordinance has to be manufacturer installed, um, it can't be in a, an accessory piece of equipment, and not all of the UTVs, um, come equipped with turn signals, so we made that adjustment, so if it's not part of the manufacturer installed equipment, then operators have to use hand signals, but they're still obligated to use a form of turn signal when they're, when they're operating the UTV. Um, the other, the other note was really, um, we had prohibited use on city streets from 12 to midnight to 5:00 AM, um, state law says midnight to 6:00 AM, so we changed that. Um, other than that, the ordinance is in its, in its form that it was in when originally approved, but it has been amended, so we would entertain a motion to pass ordinance 2022-8 as amended on its third and final reading.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2022, uh, uh, dash eight, yeah, dash eight, um, as amended by short title only.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
All right. Ordinance number 2022-8, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes and regulates the use of utility train side-by-side vehicles on the streets of the city of Decatur, Indiana.
Make a, make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-8 on its third reading.
Second.
Motion second, uh, roll call vote?
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Polonkian?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surt?
Yes.
There you go, Wendy, it's over.
No.
It's just begun.
This ordinance is effective upon passage, um, they, there is an inspection requirement.
Yes.
Um, it is necessary to contact, you know, the police department or, Chief, are you planning on holding a, a Saturday date?
Yes, um, I'm just, I ordered the stickers last week, they were completely printed with Charlie, and we come up with, uh, a design, the year on it, and numeric system, um, they might be in by this, end of this week, um, if it is, then I'm gonna post something on our social media on a Saturday, uh, just come on up, and then anytime after Saturday, they would have to call the police department, uh, me or the deputy chief, have to make an appointment to come up and inspect it. Um, I think that's only fair because, uh, the offices are pretty busy, this is gonna take a little time, so I want them on the road, so me and the deputy chief will handle that.
Okay, and then the other thing is, it's an annual inspection, and so, they're gonna, anyone who uses the UTV on city streets is gonna have to do this annually.
And there's no charge?
No charge.
Where do we sign?
So, once you have the stickers, you're gonna go ahead and start the inspection?
Yeah, I'll, I'll post it on our Twitter and Facebook, and, um, I'm sure it'll spread, and the people that, that message me and stuff, they'll, they'll probably ask me after tonight, you know, tell them what's, what's going on, so I'll just cut and paste, cut and paste each message to the next guy.
So, when people, on tonight or tomorrow, it's, because I'm getting the calls too, so.
Yeah.
It's, wait till the stickers come, and then we'll.
Yeah, as soon as I get those stickers in, and, uh, we'll.
It'll be on your social media.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, just, just a reminder, um, it doesn't matter what you're driving out there, whether it's a bicycle, golf cart, UTV, a car, motorcycle, whatever, first things first, the safety, you know, protect yourself, and make sure you're watching out for everyone else, um, if you're not, our police officers will be watching, so please keep each other safe.
Thank you, thank you to Ann too on that.
Yeah, thank you guys for all the work. You know, I'm glad, you know, you took a long time to do this, um, obviously you heard it from everyone that wanted it passed, and I appreciate you taking the time, looking at all other city ones, and doing all the work you did, you and Ann both together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
Jeremy, approval for his park?
Oh. Yeah, Jeremy was, uh, talking about the, he, uh, request for approval for capital improvements for the Rev Sports Complex, and that's, since it's seated funds, it's actually a council, uh, vote, um, do you wanna talk about the, what you're asking for right now currently?
Permission to spend $13,000 out of the $100,000 that's provided in the Marx apartment for a sound system for the Rev Sports Complex.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
Just wanted to report on the lease, uh, we will be purchasing the dump trailer, so, um, they've released the funds, and we'll be sending a check to Indiana Trailer Sales.
And that's for the recycling dump site?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, did we talk anymore about, I know when we were out there all looking about asphalt in that area, what was, what was the thoughts there?
Uh, Wayne is getting maybe lost or.
Okay, okay, all right.
I'm sure it will happen, but I just haven't sold the cost and start paying the bullshit.
All right, okay.
It'd be nice to get that.
It'd make sense to do it when they're, when they're in town already, right? Okay, all right, uh, department heads, Jeremy?
Uh, I think I've set enough, other than, uh, community crossings activities going on currently, uh, handicap ramps, casting adjustments, getting ready for, you know, alternating and then some, so hopefully in about 30 days, we'll start paving, they'll have paved all 19 streets plus some.
Okay. Is it now, when they pave, is that on us if we have to raise castings and stuff, or we?
Not in the community crossing, well, not in the community crossings, the casting adjustment, ramp adjustment was figured in this time.
Okay, okay.
To make sure that happens, that there was a line item in there for this adjustment.
Okay, okay. Lee?
Uh, probably, uh, we've all met Big Brothers and Big Sisters, uh, Kid's sake last week, raised about $2,000 from organization, and then, uh, next council week, Tuesday, I'm in the theater, I'll be at the, doing security with the Lord Mayor in Fort Wayne, uh, me and four other officers, what we doing that, and then, I just got word that Officer Ham is eligible after passing, uh, two weeks for, to be a DRE instructor, which is a drug recognition expert, and, uh, he'll be going to Jacksonville, Florida for the remainder of the training, and it won't cost us anything, it's all paid for by CDS, so, he's all excited, so, we're excited that this is, uh, a good thing to have for impaired driving, so if he called out on, uh, officers that someone impaired on, not alcohol, but just, you know, pills, some type of, of substance, so it's a good thing, so.
All right, great, great, and is there a coach you're gonna be hanging out with when you're up and falling?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Mike Woods.
Oh, oh, I use coach, uh-huh, uh-huh, that'll be a great time, Mark.
You're having the first year tonight, I'm gonna let you on some, I'll be the rear. I'll be respected.
All right, enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Could be better, well, wife's loving the voice. Um, Friday, we had four of our personnel and one of their wives down at the FBI, which is the Fire Department Structors Conference in Indianapolis, and they did the climb, what it's called, for our 9/11, they went in 110 stories, and our department raised 1,600 dollars, and replaced actually in the fundraising segment, through the whole nation that raised funding, so, did a great job.
Cool, good job.
Other than that, nothing else yet, unless I'm there this night. How many flights did you climb? I did climb it. Just thinking on your job.
Josh?
At our last meeting, we, uh, sent a raid of store in Dunedin, get very noticed, and Dunedin Santeri line and manhole we found, relayed like 210 feet, and so, two new structures. We also, Friday, we fixed the aeration line at the 2nd Street, that's why I'm 60 National Igos, the rubbers were shot, so we put high temp gaskets in, think it worked pretty well. We've been doing a lot of investigating on, under GED, our Santeri line, um, we, I'm working on running. We're looking at running a 300 foot run between 9 and 10. They eliminate all that stuff from under GE. There's also a little bit of AEP parking lot too, over north of Indiana. But 300 foot run eliminated at least 1800 feet of pipe, there's some needed, this whole paths and. I know Andrew Lussey sent me a video before we came in here and that line is full, it's an eight inch and it's dumping from GE parking lot, where the old building was.
So for people that don't understand what he's talking about, you know, we had sewer separation, but all of them are still combined, there's still water getting in sewers, whatever, everywhere. Josh has really hit the ground running with that camera truck, with cleaning, with doing everything. He's become a great asset to get in there and he's, he wants to do a lot of the work himself, which is saving us money, but every piece that he takes out to fill out in rainwater, getting our sewer system that we're not having treated at the plant. So he's found a couple big smoking guns just recently.
Huge.
And when he talks about an eight inch line running water, storm water, that's a lot of water that we're paying to treat, it's rainwater. So this is, this is a big deal, this one he just found recently.
Cleanout was all way full, so it wasn't a lot of anything going in the main.
So basically it was a lot, a lot of the, around the GE lot, around that whole area, a lot of that water was going right into our sewer system.
That 300 feet was eliminated, 1800 feet, taps, cracks, gaps. Also Jackson Street, we're gonna do that working house too. I got all the pipe in the yard for the project. Manhole be hopefully next week and we're waiting on permitting another time. If we get on I know Revs, we're trying to get that done, get the rev and they get caught up and we start on this one.
Great. Thank you. Jamie?
Also, we cleaned along Marshall Street Sewer, we cleaned 4,000 feet of that also, so.
Nice. Good.
Tonight at the Hive was a Pippin Shop event and so it was rented out by some local vendors and we were over there, it was from 5:00 to 8:00. And it was really busy and there were also insider trends and 60 Lane and Partners have been staying open longer and there were a lot of people downtown.
Yeah, I think when we went in there, there were probably 40 some people in there.
Great.
I came out of there with eight cupcakes, pretty excited about. They were doing massages, selling jewelry, selling candles, all kinds of things down there. I was outnumbered for sure, so, but it was, it was really neat to see that much foot traffic in there. Great, great event down there. Kevin? Bill?
Oh, good.
Carrie?
I just want to remind everybody to throw your flushable wipes in the trash can. It's estimated we have 7,800 pounds of trash that comes out of the sewer pipe every year.
We can't say that enough, flushable wipes are not flushable. They're not good on our system. Anything from council?
I, I would like to make council aware, Merritt Center now has security cameras throughout around the building. Also, there is new locking system for exterior doors, card readers that's been set up. So, and at some point in the future, those exterior doors will rekey because there are keys out there that we don't know where, really who has them. So once we can get a handle on all of that, but. And this was all paid through a grant that was received, that 100,000 grant that came from the state for early childhood. And it's because of King's Kingdom that's coming in, in there and so forth, but.
Yeah, that grant was from Early Learning Indiana, it was a $100,000 grant to help with Merritt Center to get things moving forward for childcare in there and to get started. I think they're planning on having some classrooms open in June?
Yes.
And Wiley, where was King's Kingdom previously?
Well, it's at Cornerstone and they're expanding.
Cornerstone Church.
So they're not, yes.
They're still gonna be there, but they're expanding.
They'll be using their facilities, but this is an expansion of what they do.
Okay. Good.
I have a question, Jeremy, I've received several emails about if there's any plans for railroad track improvements? And I said, I'll ask. Here I am asking. I did see they filled a hole in the one, or you did?
I saw the one for 20 minutes the other day, just to, just to see how long it was gonna take. But yeah, the Washington Street ones, I've had a few calls from, they're.
What is condition of the Washington? What is it? Is it unacceptable? It's unacceptable. DMM Railroad Company couldn't do anything, there's no sense, there's no reason for that. There, there's, I would call it fixed, but there's a remedy there that we can do once it warms up with the asphalt.
Yeah, I think, I think Jeremy and his crew will do a temporary fix to get it by. I mean, it's kinda, it's the railroad's job to fix it for good. Good luck. But our guys, once they can get the materials and everything, they'll do a temporary fix to. Honestly, that track right now, it would be better to go over at 90 than it would at 5.
Yeah, that's right. Cause it's harder to pass lots.
It's horrible, yeah.
I'd take buggies.
It is, that one's bad. It's bad. Anything else we got? Ian?
Oh, we got a chamber meeting Monday at noon, so get your reservations in. It'll be the State of the Legislature with Matt Lehman at the Riverside Center. Starts at 11:45, he'll be speaking around noon. I think once we provide, I think it's $15. So if you have an opportunity, join us.
Anything public? Anything for public?
I mean, UTV, it's kinda harsh on the penalties. I mean, you know, we all ride, you're going 100, 250, 500 with lifetime suspension. You're not doing that for the golf cart. And also the age limit of being seven years old to ride. You know, pre-year-olds can ride the golf cart, which is more dangerous than what we're raising. We can look at that and, you know, of course, we'll have pair seats for those that are younger. You know, we got seat belts in there, roll bars, so much safer on that aspect.
And I have heard that, I've heard some of that, some of this, just this weekend, someone brought that to my attention too, that with, with seat belts and they're more enclosed and roll bars. And I don't know, I know like I said, Lenny and I did a lot of work with other cities. I don't know if it's because they can do 70 mile an hour, if that's why, I don't. It's something we can keep looking at, but that was, I know what everything was, the turn signals that were brought to my attention this, this weekend also. I was educated this weekend on these things, so.
Yeah, we put new blinkers online, so.
But, yeah, so I, I think we pulled back on the, the turn signal one, right? If it's not, if they're not manufactured on there.
We can't require it, we would certainly encourage it if you wanna have them installed, but can't require it, so. I think it came down, sir, to really trying to create the safest, the safest environment we could while still allowing for the use on the streets and this is what several other communities found to be working. The penalties are, are strict because we want people to comply with the safety requirements that are within the ordinance. And we don't want people to do it more than once. I think that if, if people pay attention to what the ordinance says, they follow it, I don't think we're gonna see too many issues, but I, I certainly see where you're coming from with regard to the golf carts and maybe, maybe reviewing that and taking a look at, at seeing whether or not that needs to be beefed up a little bit or if there's something that we could be doing there. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the comment. Anything else?
Motion to pay the bills. Second.
Motion second, pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign.